Good evening. I am Andrew Bing and I will be the facilitator for tonight's public hearing that the Maryland Department of the Environment, or MDE, will be conducting for the 401 Water Quality Certification, or WQC, for the Maglev Project. On behalf of MDE, I welcome you. The purpose of this hearing is to provide members of the public the opportunity to present views, opinions, and information that will be considered by the MDE in evaluating the 401 WQC for the project. I'm going to just take a brief pause here and just double check something. Okay, we're having some problems with my camera, but I know everyone can hear me, so I'm going to continue. The purpose of this hearing is to provide members of the public the opportunity to present views, opinions, and information that will be considered by the MDE in evaluating the 401 WQC for the project. After we hear a brief presentation from MDE and from the applicant BWRR, I will open the hearing up for public testimony. I will review the ground rules for the hearing after these presentations. I do want to remind everyone that as the hearing facilitator, I am responsible for running the hearing. I would like to now ask if we have any elected officials to please use the Zoom bar and raise your hand. If we do have any elected officials, I will, I will recognize you before we begin taking public comments. So again, if you aren't elected official, if you could hit the raise your hand and then I will recognize you shortly. I will now introduce the representatives of MDE who are here in attendance for this evening's hearing. Danielle Spendif, Chief of the Regulatory and Customer Service Division of the Maryland Department of the Environment. At this time, I will turn the proceeding over to Danielle to provide her statement.
Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Maryland Department of the Environment's Public Informational Hearing for Water Quality Certification Request Number 23-WQC-0007, submitted by Baltimore, Washington Rapid Rail, or BWRR. My name is Danielle Spendif, Chief of the Regulatory and Customer Service Division at the Maryland Department of the Environment, which I will refer to as MDE or the Department. I am the panelist representing the department at this evening's public informational hearing. Also in attendance online from the department is Heather Nelson, Program Manager for the Wetlands and Waterways Protection Program. I would like to thank everyone for taking the time to participate in the public process and any elected officials or their representatives who may be present this evening. It is the responsibility of the department to evaluate requests for water quality certifications, or WQC's, under Section 401 of the Clean Water Act, which requires Maryland as the certifying authority to determine whether the discharge associated with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, known as the Corps, Permit Application NAV-2016-01622 complies with the state's water quality standards. The department's authority is found in Subtitle IX of the Environment Article. Each certification request received through our regulatory program has specific and unique issues and impacts that must be considered with regard to Maryland's water quality standards. The department is neither a proponent nor an opponent of any project. The department is conducting this evening's public informational hearing pursuant to Code of Maryland Regulations, or COMAR, The purpose of this public informational hearing is for the applicant to present an analysis of impacts that may be associated with the proposed activity. From the hearing participants, the department is seeking your perspectives, views, and concerns about the project, specifically as they relate to the Water Quality Certification Request. Although we will not be responding to questions this evening, your public input is essential to making well-informed and thoughtful decisions. I would like to emphasize that the purpose of this public informational hearing is to consider only the WQC request pending before the department and specifically any proposed impact to water quality. There may be concerns related to issues that are beyond the scope of the certification request and hearing. We would like for the hearing to remain focused on the water quality certification decision and related concerns. It is not necessary to read a statement to make it part of the official record. Written comments will also be accepted and receive the same consideration as any oral statement. In fact, for accuracy, if you have a letter to read into the record, I suggest that you also provide us with a copy of the letter when you finish via email or regular mail. This public informational hearing is for Water Quality Certification Request Number 23-WQC-0007, submitted by BWRR and received by the department on February 7, 2023, for a dedicated alignment and structures for a high-speed superconducting magnetic levitation, or SC Maglev, transportation system between Washington DC and Baltimore, Maryland with an intermediate stop at BWI Airport. The SC Maglev alignment consists of both below-ground and elevated rail on viaduct. The hearing record will remain open for two weeks until 11:59 PM on Thursday, November 2, 2023. The comments received during the public comment period will become part of the project file and will be considered by the department when rendering a decision on this certification request. The department is obligated to issue with or without conditions, deny, or waive certification of this project prior to expiration of the reasonable period of time as determined by the Corps, which is February 7, 2024. The department's decision and accompanying information will be sent to the interested persons list, the applicant, and the Corps, and will be published in the Maryland Register. Any person who is aggrieved by the department's decision may appeal by filing a request within 30 days of publication of the WQC decision in accordance with COMAR 26.08.02.10-F4. Please contact me directly via email to be added to the interested persons list. I will now turn the proceedings over to the applicant to provide a brief presentation on their proposed project.
Good evening. My name is Ian Rainey. I'm Senior Vice President with Baltimore, Washington Rapid Rail, the developer of the Baltimore, Washington DC Maglev Project, and the applicant for this water quality certification. I'll provide a quick overview of the project as part of this public hearing. To begin with, our company's long-term vision is to connect the major cities and airports from Washington DC to New York City using superconducting magnetic levitation technology, or SC Maglev for short. The first phase of that long-term vision is the segment between Baltimore and Washington DC. At 311 miles per hour, SC Maglev will enable a one-hour trip from Washington to New York and a roughly 15-minute trip between DC and Baltimore. And to avoid any confusion, I would like to note that our WQC application is solely for the Baltimore, Washington DC segment. This map shows the alignment, station locations, and the train set maintenance facility, or TMF, location that BWRR submitted to MDE for the WQC. As you may notice, most of the alignment is underground. BWRR designed it this way to minimize surface impacts, especially to residential communities. We'd like to emphasize that BWRR is firmly committed to following both federal and state stormwater management guidelines. We will comply with all MDE regulations for regulated stormwater quality and quantity treatment. Moreover, we will implement environmental site design, ESD, to the maximum extent practicable. We will also implement erosion and sediment control measures in accordance with MDE practices and timeframes. Regarding non-title wetlands and wetlands and waterways, this slide shows both permanent and temporary proposed impacts in the top table. And of those, the proposed impacts to non-title wetlands of special concern are shown in the bottom table. I would like to note that this information is drawn from the WQC application, and I would encourage participants in this hearing to take a look at that application for more details. Regarding Tier 2 impacts, the projects, the project will traverse the Patuxet River 1 and Beaver Dam Creek 2 Tier 2 watersheds. BWRR plans to maintain the condition of waters in these watersheds by avoiding or minimizing impacts. Where impacts can't be avoided, we'll apply appropriate mitigations. In fact, from the earliest design stages of this project, we've sought to avoid impacts. For example, we've minimized the size of the TMF as much as possible. We've placed as much of the alignment in tunnel as is practicable in order to eliminate surface impacts particularly to residential communities. We believe there is sufficient opportunity for mitigation in the Patuxet River 1 watershed through reforestation. In the Beaver Dam Creek 2 watershed, there are limited opportunities for mitigation. However, there is a similitude of capacity. As noted in the WQC, BWRR has located more mitigation than required in the Patuxet River 1 watershed, and we have provided a social and economic justification for the unmedicable impacts to the Beaver Dam Creek 2 watershed. I'd like to conclude by highlighting just some of the benefits of the project that are explained in greater detail in the WQC. These include a reduction of emissions resulting in better air quality for our region, significant job creation, and of course, transportation improvements without displacement of residential communities. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, I'd like to thank Danielle and Ian for those remarks. I do want to also recognize Judith Davis, who's a council member with the city of Greenbelt. Councilmember Davis, thanks for joining us. There are multiple ways to comment on the WQC. You can provide oral testimony at this hearing or send an email or written letter to the MDE Wetlands and Waterways Program. Details on ways to comment can be found on the video screen. All comments received, whether at the hearing through oral testimony or through other methods, will be given equal consideration, and comments must be received before 11:59 PM on Thursday, November 2, 2023. Today's public hearing is being audio recorded. The official transcript of the public hearing testimony will become part of the project record and will be available for public review on the MDE's project website. The agency representative and I will be listening to all testimony and will not be answering questions or responding to any comments made during the hearing. All testimony will be provided live through the Zoom platform. If you would like to provide testimony, please click the Raise Your Hand feature, which is on, which should be on the bottom in the Zoom toolbar. Once you raise your hand, you will be placed into the queue, and I will call on people in the order that I see their name with elected officials going first. When I call your name, we will unmute you on our end, and then you will have to unmute yourself, and then you can provide testimony. If you're calling in, and I do see that we have one person who was calling in, you will hit star nine to raise your hand and then hit star six to unmute yourself. Again, that's star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself if you are on by phone. Again, the purpose of this public hearing is to allow interested parties to provide public comments on the WQC. My role as the hearing facilitator is to run a professional and orderly public hearing. I understand how important the issues are related to the WQC, and I take my role as hearing facilitator seriously. I am committed to providing members of the public an opportunity to provide comments in an organized, fair, professional, and orderly manner. We look forward to hearing your perspectives on the proposed project, but please be courteous of all speakers and understand that offensive or profane language will not be allowed. The panelist is interested in hearing comments about the WQC from all interested individuals. Again, neither I nor Ms. Spendif will respond to any questions or comments. We are here to listen. Please remember that we are recording this hearing. Speak directly and clearly into your computer or the phone and provide your full name, address, and any organization you may be representing. To ensure all be heard, there will be a three-minute time limit for public testimony and a five-minute time limit for elected officials or anyone who is representing a group. The time will start after you introduce yourself. I will remind you when you have approximately 30 seconds remaining, so you can begin to wrap up your testimony. And as the hearing facilitator, if you are unable to conclude your comments at the end of your time period, I will end your testimony and move on to the next person in the queue. So at this time, I will call on the first person to provide comments. We will begin with comments from elected officials and then move on to comments from the public. Okay, so thank you everyone for allowing us to make those introductory remarks, and now we're going to move on to hearing from those who have made the decision to provide public comments. I am going to go to Judith Davis first, the council member from the, from the city of Greenbelt. So Councilmember Davis, we're going to unmute you, and then you will need to unmute yourself. And then once you come on, if you could introduce yourself, your name, the spelling of your name, and, and an address.
Certainly. Judith Davis, J-U-D-I-T-H-D-A-V-I-S, Greenbelt City Council Member and former mayor, 7728 Hanover Parkway, Greenbelt, Maryland. I rep, I am representing the city council and the residents of the city of Greenbelt.
Great, go ahead.
Greenbelt has vehemently opposed the Maglev Project since its inception for countless reasons. I will, however, give only a few of those relevant to this discussion. The two routes currently proposed cut through either our Greenbelt East residential area or our historic Greenbelt and treasured Forest Preserve. Greenbelt is a planned community designed and constructed as a New Deal project and watched over by Eleanor Roosevelt herself. The city is on the National Historic Register for its plan. A major component of that plan was the encircling forested green space, our Green Belt. For over the years, we have lost chunks of the Green Belt due to development, but managed to keep large parcels as forest. Literally 20 years ago in 2003, the city council enacted legislation setting aside in perpetuity the remaining parcels of the original Green Belt as our forest preserve. The Western Maglev Route will cut our forest preserve in half, decimating its ecosystems, fencing off wildlife movement, and defiling the streams that run through it. The forest preserve, the soul of Greenbelt, will be lost. The water table is very high throughout the city. Movement of groundwater needs to be unimpeded. It is unknown what impact the Maglev tunnels of the eastern route will have on Greenbelt East residential properties. BWRR's application does not fully describe impacts of soil compaction and the interrelated impacts of nearby proposed projects. Promises had been made by BWRR, but what if their studies are wrong? There are no guarantees. Because of this uncertainty, property values will fall. BWRR has not provided the public a true estimate of construction costs, who will pay for them, or how the SC Maglev would be financially viable once constructed. BWRR relies on unrealistic predictions of ridership demand and expected revenue. The SC Maglev offers no economic benefit to Greenbelt. We will not have access to it. The promise of jobs is all smoke and mirrors. The estimated ridership numbers have proven to be bogus. The Maryland Department of the Environment should not issue a water quality certification for the Maglev for many reasons. The overall environmental review process is on hold, so the final project route and its impacts are unknown. There is no indication about when the DEIS or the U.S. Army Corps Review of Proposed Impacts to Wetlands or Waterways will restart or conclude. BWRR is asking MDA to evaluate and certify a project that could end up to be vastly different. This is a waste of the MDE's time. There are too many additional unknowns in BWRR's WQC application for MDE to issue a certification. The predicted water quality impacts are extremely problematic for Greenbelt. The western route evaluated in the WQC application involves building a maintenance yard in Bark, Beltsville Agricultural Research Center, which borders Greenbelt to the north. The site proposed is heavily forested. Increasing impervious surface in this area was significantly altered and degraded the Beaver Dam Creek watershed and its headwaters. It would replace natural areas and open space with hundreds of acres of new impervious surface. In its application, BWRR admits that it cannot fully mitigate these impacts. Other parts of BWRR's application are very vague and save key details until later phases of design. BWRR relies on empty words like promising best management practices to control stormwater impacts, but leaves out important details. The SC Maglev Project has adverse environmental justice implications, including its impact on available green space and water quality. The SC Maglev will cause irreparable disruption to the primary natural area that is relied on and available to the EJ communities in Greenbelt and in nearby Prince George's County communities, an area including the Beaver Dam Creek watershed and Bark. In conclusion, Greenbelt is residents, and is Greenbelt and its city council strongly urge MDE to deny BWRR's water quality certification based on a lack of information needed for a complete evaluation and based on the significant adverse impacts to water quality already revealed in the deficient information BWRR has submitted. Thank you for your attention and careful consideration of our concerns about the SC Maglev Project. Deny the water quality certification. Kill this environmental disaster. The SC Maglev is a wolf in sheep's clothing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We do have, excuse me, several other people have their hands raised, but I have to take a brief break, a technical break. It should only take a minute or less, and then I'm going to come right back, and I'm going to go down our list. So just stay where you are, and we'll be right back. We are in recess right now at 7:22 for one minute. Okay, we're back a little less than one minute. I do want to go to to Keisha James, who is the mayor of Bladensburg, who is an elected official, and we want to recognize her and also give her the opportunity to provide her comments next. So Mayor James, you're going to, we're going to unmute you, and then you're going to need to unmute yourself. And then if you could come on and state your name and spell your name, who you're representing, and an address, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Bing. Thank you. My name is Tekeisha James. That is T as in Thomas, A-K-I-S-H-A. James, J-A-M-E-S. Address is 5507 Doris Court, Bladensburg, Maryland. Area, I'm sorry, zip code 20710. And I am here to speak on behalf of residents for the town of Bladensburg.
Great, go ahead and start your comments.
Thank you, sir. Again, thank you for the opportunity to give comments regarding WQC Request Number 23-WQC-0007. Again, I am Mayor Tekeisha James of the town of Bladensburg, where nearly 10,000 Prince George's County residents reside just outside of Washington DC and very near the Anacostia River. The town of Bladensburg is part of the port towns, which includes Comar Manor, Cottage City, and the town of Edmiston. Our communities are ethnically and culturally diverse, but also unique because of our history for the area as well as the history of the state of Maryland. We are home to sites such as the Boswick House, which was built around 1747, and home to the First Secretary of the United States Navy, Christopher Lowndes, as well as other historic homes built in the 1700s, including the Market Master's House, the McGruder House, and Indian Queen Tavern, which is believed to be visited by President George Washington himself. We are the home of sites such as the historic War of 1812, the Dueling Grounds, the Bladens, the Battle of Bladensburg, and more. Particularly in the 1700s, this area was prevalent for tobacco farming. And while it was profitable at the time, it took its toll on the community, and the success financially did come with a price. It significantly damaged the soils in our area, which silted up the Anacostia River to a point that by the mid-1800s, ocean vessels could no longer travel to our local port. And so when I think about the SC Maglev and the proposed route that it would take from Washington DC into Prince George's County up to Baltimore, but coming specifically through the port towns, it would clearly disturb landfills and potentially release methane gases into our local communities. Again, this really ignites a lot of environmental concerns regarding this project. I also think about this high-speed train and the impacts coming under the Anacostia River, which is already fragile. Again, I'll say it was silted up hundreds of years ago. And so we're very concerned that any sort of disturbance by this high-speed rail and our delicate water system would release some very toxic things into our community when those sediments are disturbed. Recently, our state delegate Julian Ivy invited Secretary of Maryland Department of Natural Resources Josh to the, to visit the port towns area specifically around the Anacostia, because we are looking desperately to restore this river. And it was at that point that Secretary Kurtz reminded us that just about every Marylander is only 10 minutes away from a local body of water, only 10 minutes away. And so this makes it incumbent upon us to protect our waterways from any sort of projects that could potentially cause harm to human life, to animal life, as well as the plant life in our communities. As stated on the website for Department of Natural Resources, and I quote, "Within the state of Maryland is a unique area in that we have a number of different resources so close together, making the situation even more complex is the fact that those areas intertwine." And so it is with this in mind in assessing the conditions of the Anacostia River, but also thinking about the impacts of the SC Maglev on the Patuxent River and Beaver Dam Creek that I express my concerns and the concerns of the Bladensburg and Port Towns community and want to make sure that the request for the SC Maglev and their water quality application is not permitted to go forward. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor James. Thank you to both of our elected officials who have provided comments. And right now, I'm unaware of any other elected officials that have joined us and, and are looking to make comments. So I'm going to now move on to all of our other people who have raised their hands. I'm going to go again in the order that they appeared on my screen. So the first person I'm going to go to is Dan Wimmer with MCRT. And just so that she can be prepared, the next speaker I will go to after that is Denise from Cottage City. But again, first Dan Wimmer, Mr. Wimmer, you will need to unmute yourself. We're going to unmute you, and then you're going to need to unmute yourself. And then when you come on, if you could state your name and spell your name, who you're representing, and an address, please. Okay, I'm not hearing you yet. Have we unmuted? Okay, we've unmuted you. Again, Mr. Wimmer, you need to now unmute yourself. Yep, we can hear you now.
Fantastic.
So if you could state your name and spell your name, who you're representing, and an address, please.
I will do so. I am Dan Wimmer. That's D-A-N-W-O-O-M-E-R. I live at 6242 Woodland Road, Lenthicam Heights, Annarbor County. I represent the Maryland Coalition for Responsible Transit, MCRT. The MCRT is organized for the purpose of encouraging public participation in development of current and future transit proposals by ensuring they are evaluated for economic viability, social and environmental impact, and community accessibility. From our researching, the SC Maglev and its impacts on communities along potential alignments since 2017, MDE should deny BWRR's water quality certification for many reasons. Here's one. The Federal Railroad Administration states the operation of the SC Maglev would significantly increase greenhouse gas emissions. But the BWR, but BWRR claims, quote, "The reduction of overall regional vehicle miles traveled from the project as compared to no build will likely result in a regional GHG emissions reductions on a regional scale," end quote. In reality, building and operating the SC Maglev will increase greenhouse gas levels in a, in a region for several reasons. You, number one, you already know that the ridership projections stated by BWRR of 11 to 12 million passengers per day are upwards of 10 times more, 10 times more of the likely ridership of 1 million or less. So the numbers of vehicle miles saved by riding the SC Maglev is roughly one-tenth the number BWR projects. Thus, the greenhouse gas emission reductions would also be about one-tenth the amount BWRR is projecting. Research from Japan found that SC Maglev can use up to five times the energy compared with high-speed rail. Seventy-three percent of Maryland's electricity comes from nuclear natural gas. And since twenty fifteen, all of the new generated capacity has been natural gas-fired or solar-powered. With the amount of electricity needed to operate the SC Maglev, greenhouse gas emissions will also increase. Three, during construction, there will be a significant, let me rephrase that. There will be a huge increases in greenhouse gas emissions from construction equipment. For example, to build the fresh air emergency egress shafts, launch and retrieval sites, BWRR estimates five hundred thirty dump truck trips twenty-four hours a day for twelve months, one thousand five fifty-five work-related trips and five hundred twenty-five worker-vehicle trips per day. For tunnel boring, the estimate is one thousand six hundred and fifty to two thousand one hundred seventy-five dump truck trips twenty-four hours a day for between thirteen and a half and twenty-four months. The numbers for the construction of the VIDOCs, train maintenance facilities, substations, passenger stations are similar. Also, think about the access roads, temporary staging, and work equipment storage areas. This does not include the multitude of other construction equipment that will be employed. Think about all the diesel and gasoline engine pollution from thousands of pieces of construction equipment released into our environment for years needed to build the SC Maglev. One last point. What is the regional loss of CO2 absorption with the destruction of hundreds of acres of current green space, green space in forested areas? As stated in a prior hearing, MCRT finds the better alternative for high-speed reliable ground-based train service between Baltimore and Washington DC is to continue the enhancement and upgrade of Amtrak and Mark. The environmental and waterway impacts to enhancing these existing and operating services is a fraction of what building and operating the SC Maglev would bring. The access they provide to people all along the corridor is far greater at a far lower cost. For these reasons and many more, the MDE should deny BWRR's water quality certification request. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wimmer. Our next speaker is going to be Denise. I don't have a last name, but Denise from Cottage City is how it's listed. And then after Denise will be Kathy Bartolomeo. Denise, before you go, again, we're gonna unmute you and then you're gonna unmute yourself. I do want to remind people that if you would like to provide public comments, what you need to do is use the Zoom toolbar and click on Raise Your Hand. And you will, that, that will notify me that you would like to provide public comments and I will call you in the order that your hand went up. I also want to let anyone who may be joining us by phone know that you will need to hit star nine to raise your hand. And that again will let me know that you want to provide comments. So Denise, if you could come on and state your name and spell your name. And if you are representing an organization, let us know that and then an address, please.
Yes, my name is Denise Hamler. That is D E N I S E. Hamler, H A M L E R. I live at thirty-seven fourteen Thirty-seventh Avenue in Cottage City, Maryland, in Prince George's County. I'm a community activist working on a social and environmental justice issues in our community. When my port towns, neighbors, and myself learned about the proposed high-speed train that would go directly under our homes and the Anacostia River, we educated ourselves in the effect on our lives, our health, and our environment. We discovered that we would not benefit, but would actually suffer if it was built. For example, seventy percent of the path of the train affects minority populations, and there are no stops in Prince George's County. The potential impact along the route is extreme and results in loss of property values, dangerous emissions, exposure to electronic electromagnetic radiation, pollution of streams and waterways, and stormwater runoff. In my neighborhood, the train would go under Colmar Manor, our sister community, and the original Prince George's County landfill that was capped in the late fifties. This site is just feet from our homes and one quarter mile from the Washington DC border. It cannot be developed due to the methane and potential environmental and human contamination at that site. Instead, it is used as ball fields for our children. For example, when the Newport Town Elementary School was to be built, the site did not test well and the site was abandoned. Over eleven Prince George's neighborhoods, towns, and eight designated parks would be affected. Over four hundred and fifty-one acres of critical forests would be affected. Residential properties would experience noise and vibrational impacts when completed. While under construction, hundreds of diesel trucks a day will travel over our roads and through our neighborhoods, carrying sludge and contaminants while releasing exhaust pollution. The air quality of our residents would be highly compromised. The train, as I mentioned, would go under the Anacostia River at the historic Bladensburg waterfront park, which, as we know, has its own challenges, as Mayor James expressed in detail. Already in the port towns, we have two CSX and Mark train tracks located directly adjacent to our businesses and homes. These high-speed freight trains carrying toxins run up to five times an hour, twenty-four hours a day, every day. Several weeks ago, one of these trains derailed in Hyattville and seventeen train cars were thrown from the tracks. It was extremely fortunate that it happened at one thirty AM and was hauling plastic pellets and not toxic tanker cars. We escaped, escaped disaster this time. The research shows that the safety and crashworthiness of this new Maglev technology is also in serious question. It is unlikely that building and operating this train would reduce greenhouse gas despite repeated claims. It will not remove commuter traffic from the roads because there are no stops between DC and Baltimore.
Thirty seconds.
Not designed to directly serve local communities. The bottom line is that the building will have an extreme destructive impact on our environment. So we ask that MDE not grant the water quality certification to BWRR based on environmental issues and because the project is on a long pause with the Federal Railroad Administration. Thank you for your consideration of my remarks and our concerns in the Port Towns community of Prince George's County.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next speaker we're going to go to is Kathy Bartolomeo. After Kathy will be Susan McCutcheon. And I do want to let people, everyone else know who's raised their hands, just in case they're wondering if they're on there. So we're going to go to Kathy and then Susan McCutcheon. We're then going to go to Jermaine Jones. And then to Hallie is how it shows up on my screen, just H A L L Y. Then Rich Dolish and then Ann Young. So those are the people who I see having raised their hands. So we're going to go to Kathy. If you could state your name and spell your name. And if you are representing a group, let us know that. And if not, just an address, please.
Hi, Kathy Bartolomeo. B A R T O L O M E O. Fifteen, sorry.
That's okay. Take your time.
Fifteen, Laurel Hill Road, Unit R, Greenbelt, Maryland, two oh seven seven oh. Sorry, sorry.
That's okay. As long as it's not disrupting you, you can, we're hearing you very clearly.
Here we go. As a grandmother, I am concerned about my grandchildren's future. Climate change brings faster rainfalls, resulting in difficulties handling the runoffs. Excess water and runoff carry with them unsavory chemicals, oils, fuels, construction waste, and erosion. In the areas BWRR is proposing to build a Maglev such as DC's Mount Vernon Square, Bladensburg, Laurel, Greenbelt, Lithicum, and Westport, more impervious land will be created, making stormwater management much more of a problem than we so far have imagined. Have algae blooms been considered, especially around Bladensburg? From an article by Dr. Stephanie Smith two years ago, stated stormwater can be type of excess water precipitated by storms that runs into tributaries, rivers, lakes, streams, and ultimately into the ocean. It can be rural or urban in origin and happening more frequently and more severely than it ever has before. So this is a problem really for everybody that's involved in water monitoring, water management, especially in urban areas. BWR plans to replace trees that are removed from the growth inability, but the growth and ability to help water retention and provide habitat for creatures will not match our present trees. For a number of years, it takes an oak tree twenty years to grow sixty feet in full sun. We have very little time to grow trees since building the Maglev is about seven years, most likely ten years, as construction prob, projects are often not on schedule. Climate change will not pause. Erosion is no issue in Prince George's counties that is trying to address. As trees are removed from stream banks and rivers, more erosion happens, and there's more runoff into our waters. The county's grading erosion and sediment control plans are reviewed and approved for residential, commercial, forest harvest, stream maintenance, surface mining, fill sites, landfills, and county and municipal projects. The district urban staff review an average of eighteen hundred planned submissions per year. This is just one county, and surely the others, I haven't addressed these as well. An issue Sierra Club, this is just one issue, asked about regarding birds, what evidence is there about the possible effects of the emitted electromagnetic waves on the navigation of migratory birds who stop at the Patuxent Wildlife Research Issue? And another issue.
Thirty seconds left.
An issue is also about the elevated platforms, you know, trees dropping onto the rails. How's that going to affect the train clearance, guideways, and reduce the number of runs that Maglev would run? That would reduce their revenue for Maglev. So please oppose the water quality certification for BWR. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker will be Susan McCutcheon. And after Susan will be Jermaine Jones. Susan, we're gonna unmute you. You then need to unmute yourself. And then when you come on, please state your name and spell your name. If you are representing a group, we would like you to let us know that and then state an address, please. Susan, we're not hearing anything. Again, you'll need to unmute yourself. We have unmuted you. You'll, you'll need to unmute yourself. Now it looks like.
I had unmuted and then it went back again. Okay.
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, and it's, and I am representing a group, sir.
Okay, so go ahead and state all that information, your name, spell your name, the group you're representing, and an address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Susan, S U S A N, McCutcheon, M C, capital C, U T C, H E N. I live at five four oh four Spring Road in Bladensburg, Maryland, two zero seven one zero. Okay?
And what group are you representing?
I am representing the Bladensburg Citizens Against the SC Maglev.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much. We have been reviewing the BWRR broad-based application in that, and broad-based, I'm saying because it does go beyond water issues and doesn't include other aspects that aren't, aren't specifically necessarily water issues. To that, I would say, hey, Americans thirsty to have high-speed trains like other countries? We're the Baltimore-Washington Rapid Rail and we've got a real fast Japanese technology-based superconducting magnetic levitation train going to New York in the works. A company with high-profile advisory board members and an international presence are behind us all the way, so we must be trustworthy and reliable. Technology safety, you ask? We'll get to that later, we promise. Pollution and other surely comparably negligible harms to waterways. But do we ever have mitigation efforts in mind? You'd better believe it. Jobs galore, cutting edge education for your kids. Prosperity will abound, particularly in environmental justice communities. Cost you anything? Heck, no. Although we're already using your taxpayer dollars from federal funding and are seeking more and may come back to Maryland later, just in case we need it, according to our yearly legislative testimony. Why do so many of us residents not love the proposed SC Maglev train project? Let us count some of the ways. The potential impact on communities along the SC Maglev route is extreme, e.g. seven schools with the train running under their campuses, loss of property or a portion of some properties as needed through eminent domain, I should say, and property value, dangerous emissions into the communities, exposure to electromagnetic radiation pollution, as some have said already, pollution of streams and waterways, stormwater runoff with pollutants, and an increase of invasive plants and vermin. The promise of high-level steam education for youth has not been quantified in any meaningful way despite ostentatious outreach to community organizations, community colleges, and historically black colleges and universities in the area. Why do we want to give federal land to BWRR, a private for-profit corporation? Shall we just open the doors to further development on protected lands while we're at it? As mentioned about safety, the crash, safety and crash, crashworthiness of the train system itself is in question. It has not been assessed against US standards and the rule of particular applicability. It is unlikely that building and operating the SC Maglev will reduce greenhouse gases despite repeated DWRR claims. It will not remove commuter traffic from the roads because there are no stops between DC and Baltimore, as has been mentioned. And it is not designed to directly serve local communities. As mentioned as well, the SC Maglev has high-powered energy consumption and is not green. In fact, uses up five times more energy than a high-speed steel-wheeled train, according to the Japanese. The building will have, of the SC Maglev will have an extreme destructive impact on our environment and destroy one of the last wildlife preserves and plant research areas left on the East Coast. And again, as has been said, Amtrak, Mark, and VRE are far better alternatives to the SC Maglev, offering more ridership and convenience and already in place and operational. BWRR's water quality certification application and related reports are flawed and do not demonstrate the level of specificity and accuracy required by the Maryland Department of the Environment to grant the certification. Specificity regarding stormwater treatments is needed. Details regarding practices used for reforestation and stormwater mitigations are vague and lack comprehensive descriptions. We ask the MDE not grant WQC to BWRR for the SC Maglev project for the above reasons and because the project on a long pause with the Federal Railroad Administration has yet to be defined succinctly by the choice of a selected route through a supplemental or a final draft environmental impact statement that must first be vetted by the public. Thank you for your consideration of my remarks. Good evening.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We're next going to go to Jermaine Jones and then to Hallie, H A L L Y. Mr. Jones, if you, we're gonna unmute you and then you'll need to unmute yourself. And then you can come on and if you would, if you could state your name and spell your name. If you are representing a group, which I believe you are, because it says Building Trades on here, and an address, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is, my name is Jermaine Jones. That's J E R M A I N E. Jones, J O N E S. And I represent the Baltimore DC Building and Construction Trade Union.
And an address, please.
Oh, yes. My address is one five zero five North Bond Street, B O N D, Baltimore, Maryland, two one two one three.
Good. Thank you. And go ahead with your comments.
Yes. Good, good evening. My name is Jermaine Jones. I'm the Baltimore Director for the Baltimore DC Building and Construction Trades. And I'm here today to testify in support of, of, of the certification request. So the Baltimore DC Building and Construction Trades represents twenty-four local union affiliates with over twenty-five thousand skilled craft professionals in the building and construction trades industry in the greater Baltimore, Baltimore DC and Northern Virginia region. We advocate for the advancement in the construction industry. In addition to, in addition to ensuring every worker receives an honest day's pay, returns safely home from work, receives healthcare and retirement benefits they can one day rely on. Our affiliates spend, our affiliated apprenticeship programs spend over twenty-two million dollars annually on apprenticeship and journeyman upgrade training that delivers skilled craft work persons and over one thousand signatory contractors. Today, we support this project because we feel as though the applicant has taken a reasonable and responsible approach to building this project. While there's many concerns based upon potential issues that may arise, none of these issues have shown to be one hundred percent, you know, that they're going to actually happen or affect the environment. So we ask that you move this project forward because one thing that will happen is that there will be skilled craft men, men and women working on this project. The Mag Lab folks, they entered into an MOU, a group memorandum of understanding already agreeing to use union, local union labor to build this project. And it is a fact that when you, local union labors are utilized on these projects, the amount of environmental issues that happen are, is minimized versus when they aren't in place, when those union workers aren't in place. So I'm happy to say we, that while there are concerns, our members also live in the Maryland region and live in some of these. and live in some of these areas that have concerns as well. Um, and they have been skilled and trained to, to make sure we minimize the environmental impact that this project will have. Um, therefore, we are proud and happy to support this project and hope you, uh, granted, uh, the permission to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, we're now gonna go to Hallie. Again, all I see is H A L L Y. After Hallie will be Rich Dolish and then Ann Young. Uh, and again, uh, Hallie, before I recognize you, I just wanna make some reminders to people that, uh, if you would like to provide comments, uh, you need to use the raise your hand feature on the bottom of your screen. It should pull up on your Zoom toolbar. Uh, if you raise your hand, I will call on you, uh, in the order that I see the hands raised. If you are calling by phone, uh, you need to hit star nine if you'd like to provide testimony, and that will raise your hand. And again, I will call on you at that time. So at this point, uh, Hallie, if you could state your name and spell your name. If you are representing a group, let us know that, and an address, please.
My name is Halcyon Ahern, H A L C Y O N A A H E A R N. My address is one 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 Perry Winkle Court, Greenbelt, Maryland. I am, uh, you might say I'm under the influence of MCRG, but I'm only just becoming familiar with this project and, um, I, so, uh, I'll begin.
Yeah, go ahead with your comments.
Um, thank you, by the way, for providing this opportunity again. Um, I attended the in-person hearing on Tuesday evening and have already submitted a letter as a result of that hearing that states my, um, misgivings about the Maglev train line proposed between Washington and Baltimore. Tonight, I'll add more information to support my conclusion that this project is a boondoggle. The definition of boondoggle is work or activity that is wasteful or pointless, but gives the appearance of having value. That is, oh, yes, America needs more and faster trains to transport people and freight. Most EU countries have had high-speed trains since the nineteen eighties. While the EU has a number of serious problems to address to make these pathways into a cohesive system across its various borders, the systems by and large have this, these points of cohesion. They are nearly all electric trains. They are trains that run at speeds of about two hundred twenty miles per hour on conventional train tracks. In Germany, the track itself is configured to handle high-speed passenger trains, freight trains, and slower short-run passenger trains. In Spain, the wheels, the wheel set of high-speed trains is adapted to existing train tracks. Maglev, and I quote here from the Federal Railroad Administration's EIS or Environmental Impact Statement submitted by SC Maglev. Maglev requires a dedicated, grade-separated, fixed guideway, deep underground tunnels or elevated tracks on, uh, elevated, uh, it's not exactly a track, but on viaducts. Yeah, these are not like Japan's bullet trains or Francis TGV fast trains or China's nineteen hundred mile fast train network. They're not like most of the trains that run in America. Most trains in America run, I'm sorry to say, on conventional track fueled by diesel.
Thirty seconds.
Uh, but there is one exception. Amtrak trains in the Northeast Corridor are electric trains. Yes, like Europe, China, and Japan, they run in a corridor already carved out on tracks already laid into stations that already exist in major cities along the route. While there will be complications to updating that route for more train traffic and trains that stop frequently. Um, and that two important tunnels are already slated to be straightened and rebuilt.
I need you to wrap up your comments.
Okay. So I see a hugely expensive endeavor that will end badly. How many passengers will ride between two cities already served by three train lines, already electric trains? Who will ride, who will take a sixty-dollar ride one way?
Okay, thank you for your comments. We're next gonna go to Rich Dolish, uh, and then we'll go to Ann Young. Uh, Rich, uh, we're gonna unmute you, and then you'll need to unmute yourself. I believe you are representing, uh, Patuxent Research. Um, and so we'll give you five minutes, but if you could state your name, spell your name, who you're representing, and an address, please. Rich, hold on for one second. Um, we're getting a, a, a sketchy connection here. Just say your name again. Hopefully, maybe it's cleared up.
No, this has happened to me.
Rich, uh, Rich, I'm gonna interrupt you, because we're not able to understand you. So what I, what I'd like you to do, I, I'm gonna provide you, uh, the phone number. I think it might be easier if you just call in to provide your comments, because, um, you're, you're, you're coming through, uh, scattered, like we can't actually hear any of the words you're saying. So hold, hold, hold tight for one second. I'm trying to ask one of my colleagues to pull up the phone number. I'm gonna provide that to you.
Let me try to log in again, but if you think it'll clear up.
Let me, let me give you the phone number. You can do either way you want. Okay, um, the phone number, um, to call in is um, three, three zero one. Okay, actually, um, my colleague's gonna put it in the chat, just so you have it, because it's a, there's a lot of numbers, and I don't think you're gonna be able to, to do, to do that, okay? Um, and then, um, we will wait. We're not gonna go anywhere until you get a chance to come in and provide your comments. Before you hang up, try one more time. Let's see if maybe it cleared up. Again. Yeah, we're not, we're not getting. Why don't you hang up? Uh, try back in. If you can find the phone number to call in, I think that will be better. We're gonna go to our next person, then we'll come back to you once we get the, the technical issue cleared up on your end, okay? So now we're gonna go to Ann Young. Uh, Ann, if you could unmute, uh, we're gonna unmute you, and then if you could unmute yourself, and then come on and provide your name. Um, spell your name. If you are representing a group, let us know that, and an address, please. Okay, I think we can, uh, I think you've unmuted. Can you, uh, say something? And we're not hearing you, Ann. Again, on our end, you show as being unmuted. Um, you'll need to unmute yourself. Okay, um, and again, we're not hearing anything from you. Give it another second. Uh, my colleague did just put in the chat that everyone should see, uh, the call-in information, uh, for you to call in. Um, and again, we're gonna, um, we're gonna go to our next caller, uh, our next person who's raised their hand. Again, we do wanna hear your comments, but we're not hearing anything right now. Uh, so we're gonna come back to you and, and try again. Oh, we just lost the person who had their hand raised. Uh, we had a phone number of a person who, so right now, we just have Ann. Uh, let's try again to see if we can, uh, get you on here, Ann. Okay, now I'm showing she's muted. Okay, have we, uh, unmuted her? Yeah, we've unmuted. And Ann, if you could now try again to unmute yourself. Okay, we're having an issue, uh, with Ann. Um, and right now, I don't have anyone else whose hand has been raised. Obviously, we know that we had the one gentleman who, uh, we think is gonna call back, and he, he has come back on. Um, so, and we're gonna go, uh, back to Rich, and hopefully we can get you on here. So let's unmute Ann. I mean, uh, yep, and, uh, Rich, we're gonna unmute you. If you could unmute yourself. Let's see if it's, this is any better this time.
All right, how's this?
That is, Rich, you've never sounded better. You sound great. Uh, so again, if you could state your name and spell your name, uh, the group you're representing, and an address, please.
Hi, my name is Richard Dolish, D O L E S H. Uh, my address is one nine six oh three Aquasco Road, Aquasco, Maryland, two oh six oh eight. I'm representing the Friends of Patuxent Research Refuge. I'm the chairman of the Board of Directors of the Friends, a volunteer group that's been in existence for thirty-two years now.
Hey, great. Go ahead with your comments.
Uh, thanks, Andrew. I wanna make, uh, five points, uh, main points, and directly address water quality impact issues. I don't, won't have enough time to delve into why each of these main points is significant. Uh, but we will submit written comments, uh, by the deadline of November second, uh, with a more, uh, detailed review of each of these and additional points. Uh, we oppose the water quality certification permit, uh, to be considered by MDE. Um, and there's many reasons why. Um, first of all, generally, the permit application inadequately addresses the requirements of Maryland law and regulation for Tier Two waters. Um, the reasons why, as been, has been pointed out already tonight, the project alignment is not determined due to the pause that the Federal Railway Administration has put on the NEPA draft environmental impact, uh, statement process. So public, the public is not able to evaluate, uh, the impacts of these alignments in any kind of detail. And in fact, um, there's a whole lot that is up for, uh, expla, future explanation or environmental site design or other, uh, ways that the process of properly analyzing and evaluating the impacts is kicked down the road till, uh, some uncertain point in the future. Number three, the forest mitigation plants are deficient, if not actually in, not in compliance with Maryland law and regulation. Um, in general, this project will destroy highly biodiverse contiguous forests in, uh, national wildlife refuges, national parks, and local parks and protected areas with the intent to replace them with small splintered fragments on parcels of land that offer no permanent protection, uh, as if they should be in perpetual conservation easement or fee simple acquisition by a conservation entity. Number four, the treatment of wetlands of special state concern, the special, uh, species project review areas, SSPRAs, biodiversity conservation required by Maryland law under this permit in Tier Two waters. And in generally, the treatment of non-tidal wetlands, wet lot, wetlands, uh, stream valleys and flood plains are especially deficient in the Patuxent One and the Beaver Dam Creek Tier Two areas. And fifth, and perhaps most importantly, the project sponsor does not properly assess the cumulative impact of the temporary and irreversible loss of some of the most highly, highest quality natural lands, not just in our state, but in the entire nation. Um, this is a great concern, uh, for us as we look at the impacts to the watershed. Regardless of the immediate impacts of lay-down areas or, uh, stormwater management, uh, control structures, and then the irreversible loss that, uh, the plans to mitigate it are insufficient. Uh, we'll offer more detailed comments, written comments by the deadline of November second. But I think in total consideration of these important, required by law and regulation considerations, MDE should not grant a permit for this project for water quality certification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, we are gonna go back to Ann Young, and hopefully we can get this, uh, straightened out. Uh, again, we're gonna unmute you, and then we'll need you to unmute yourself, and then hopefully we'll be able to hear you and take your comments. Okay, Ann, I think you're unmuted. Can you say something? We're not hearing anything from you, Ann. Um, so, uh, I'm not sure what to do at this point, um, other than, uh, a couple things here. We did put the phone number in the chat, and so if you see that, maybe you could try to, uh, call in. Uh, we do have someone else who has raised their hand, so I'm gonna go to that person, and we're gonna keep trying to get you in. I, I do wanna remind everyone, um, as much as we do want to, uh, hear from people tonight and get your public comments through this vehicle tonight, there are many ways that you can provide comments, and all comments are considered equally. Um, in terms of the manner that they're received, whether it's tonight, um, orally giving your public comments, or if you write them in through email or written letter, all comments are, are received and, um, and, um, are the same, uh, no matter how they're received. Uh, but we do have a, um, a caller who is, uh, who has raised their hand. So this is caller, uh, with the last four digits, one, four, six, zero. Um, you will need to hit star six to unmute yourself. And then you come on, and if you could state your name and spell your name and provide an address, and if you are representing a group, let us know that.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Your name, please.
Um, this is Ann Young. Can you hear me now?
Ann, we can hear you. Thank you for your perseverance, and, uh, we can hear you clearly. So if you could just, uh, spell your name and, uh, your address, please.
Um, my name is Ann Young, A N N Y O U N G. Uh, thirty-seven fifteen Cottage Terrace in Cottage City, Maryland. Um, I'm a commissioner of, in Cottage City. However, I'm not speaking for the commission at this point. We have not had time to, uh, consider this issue, and I hope that we will be sending in something as a, as a town. Um, in the meantime, just personally, I would like to say that I agree with, uh, the comments made by my neighbor, Ms. Denise Hamler, and also, um, my fellow, uh, Port Town's, uh, official, uh, Mayor James in Bladensburg, um, a, as well as some of the other comments. I agree with all of those, and I'm not gonna take any more of your time at this point, but we will be sending in written comments. So I appreciate the time.
Okay, great. Thank you for, uh, thank you again for, uh, your perseverance, and thank you for your comments. And we do have someone else who has, um, uh, raised their hand. So we're gonna go to Joseph Gaskins. Uh, Mr. Gaskins, we're gonna unmute you, and then you will need to unmute yourself. And then when you come on, if you could, uh, please state your name and spell your name. Uh, let us know if you're representing a group, and then, uh, provide an address, please. Mr. Gaskins, are you there? Okay, we're not hearing you, Mr. Gaskins. Again, uh, we have unmuted you. Oh, there you are. We get, yep, we got you now. So if you could state your name and spell your name, let us know the group you're representing and an address, please.
Of course. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Joe Gaskins, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Prince George County Contractors and Business Association, representing over three thousand certified businesses in the county and the state of Maryland. Uh, we are located at eighty-seven ten Oxen Hill Road in Oxen Hill, Maryland, in Prince George County. We have had an opportunity to review the information, and, uh, and we are impressed at the strategies BWRR plans to use to maximize the environmental benefits of the project and reduce any impacts on the eco, ecosystem. We feel confident that BWRR's plan will keep construction and operation of the Maglev aligned with federal and state standards. The fact that once operational, the Maglev is projected to take, to take millions of costs off of roads, helping to improve our quality in the region is impressive and is not unusual. Um, the same quality study was done for the Washington area Metropolitan Transit System. It was successful. That system is operating for over thirty years. We feel confident that the jobs provided as well as the business and construction opportunity, well as connections to various airports leading up to New York will outweigh the inconvenience, and we are fully supportive of this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gaskins. So right now, it is, uh, eight oh nine PM, and I don't have anyone else who has raised their hand up. Um, I should have, uh, paused there for a second. We do have someone who just raised their hand, so we're gonna go to that person. All I see is a first name, Sue. Uh, Sue, we are gonna unmute you, and then you need to unmute yourself. And then when you come on, if you could state your name and spell your name and provide your address, please. All I see is a first name, Sue. Sue, we are going to unmute you and then you need to unmute yourself and then when you come on, if you could state your name and spell your name and provide your address, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can.
I am Sue or Susan Stern, S U S A N, S T E R N. And I am calling for myself from the address of 9 Ridge Road. Unit E in Greenbelt, Maryland 20770.
Great. Go ahead with your comments.
Thank you very much. I will be brief. However, I do wish to. State that my primary objective for raising my hand is to ask the MDE to extend. The public comment period for the BWRRWQC from 60 to 90 days to December 2nd. To ensure the genuine public access and the broad awareness of the process. And for clarification of current questions and missing data. I appreciate those who spoke in favor of the SC Maglev. However, would disagree with the comments insofar as Mr. Well, that the damage is sufficiently evidenced from the water runoff. That would be caused and the impacted soils. And it's a very complex project that does require more time. For the environmental ramifications as has been stated because the path isn't even certain. And. I guess also in particular within Greenbelt and the Bark. Area, the Bureau, the Department of the Treasury's Bureau of Engraving and Printing's. Final plan for a currency production facility. Will impact the same Tier 2 waters and the BWRR application addresses. So the cumulative impacts of both of those, the combination of those two projects impacts. On the Tier 2 waters needs to be assessed and publicized and allow the public sufficient time to comment. I otherwise am in support of everything that and all the well eloquent spoken. Details that have been shared for the negative impacts of this project. And sorry that mine are so simple, but I would wish that the. Permit be declined and that the comment period be extended. And I thank you for your consideration and efforts.
And we thank you for your comments. Again, right now I'm not seeing anyone else who has raised their hand to provide comments. I do want to, as the caller just mentioned, right now the comment period is, does end at 11:59 PM on Thursday, November 2nd, 2023. And again, you can provide comments both at this virtual public hearing or, but by, by providing them. In other methods such as email or a written letter. And again, all comments are given equal consideration. Right now I'm not seeing anyone else who has raised their hand indicating they would like to provide comments. So what we're going to do. Is we're going to take a recess. So right now it is 8:14 PM. We are going to wait until 8:20 PM. I'll come back on at 8:20. If anyone does raise their hand between now and 8:20, we'll come right back on. But if we don't see anyone who raised their hand, we're going to come back on at 8:20. And at that point, we are going to close out this hearing by, I will make some final remarks and then I will turn it over. To Miss Spendif who will officially close out this hearing. So again, because I don't see anyone who's indicating an interest in providing comments, we are going to go into recess. For five minutes and come back at 8:20. So right now it is 8:14 and we are in recess. So do we have a recess slide or not? Oh, oh, yeah. Okay, we're coming back from recess. Right now it is 8:20 PM. I have been following those people who have joined us and no one else has raised their hand indicating that they would like to provide testimony. What we're going to do though, we do want to make sure that we provide everyone who wants to provide testimony that opportunity. So we are going to go another five minutes in recess. So we're going to go to 8:25. And if anyone does raise their hand between now and 8:25, we will come back and take that testimony. And at 8:25, if not, we'll come back at 8:25 from recess and we will wrap up this hearing. I do want to remind people that to raise your hand, you go to the bottom of your screen to the Zoom toolbar and click on the raise your hand. Icon and that will let me know you'd like to make a testimony. Or you can hit star nine if you're calling in by phone and that will raise your hand. If you are joining us and you have been here, certainly there's no obligation for you to stick around. You're more than welcome to. But we just want to know that, you know, you can leave whenever you want. But we are going to go into recess. It's 8:21 and I'll come back at 8:25 and provide a further update. Thank you.
Thank you all for attending and have a good evening.